So this is what we're going to cover today. I'm just going to make a couple introductory remarks. And then instead of going through all of the goals that are sort of setting the agenda for this year, we're just going to talk about a few of them. We had some requests from our union colleagues to cover a couple specific issues. Those are embedded in the presentation. And so we're going to go through these particular issues and then we're going to leave as much time as possible for your questions and your comments. So we're going to cover, we're going to talk about the budget and where we are. I have to say that budgets are always sort of a moving target. There are a lot of things we don't know. For example, we will not know a really crucial piece of information. How many students did we retain across the fall-spring semester boundary? That is really quite consequential to our revenue, as well as, of course, to our students and their success, but we don't have answers to that right now. We have some early indications that we're going to share with you because I think they reflect very well on the work you do in the classroom, that the staff do to support all of our efforts, and that the sort of mission we've set of student success is actually beginning to pay off. But we'll go through that to try and explain. Anyway, the point is, at our next town hall, which will probably be sometime in the mid of next semester, more of this will have settled down. We will have more clarity on all of these numbers. They actually take a surprisingly long time to become definitive enough to plan on, but we've got some early indications we will share. I will be talking to you about the legacy debt issues that have been much on your mind and on mine, and I'll update you also on Bayside. We'll be talking about some of the early measures on student success, some of the early activities that have been ongoing, and where they seem to be paying off. And we'll talk as well about some of the things we have planned and that we are working with our advising staff on. Talk a little bit about some new policies with respect to online that we hope are going to provide more powerful incentives for faculty to get engaged with online and more convenience for our students as well, since online is kind of a part of our whole educational enterprise now. Then we will be updated on capital projects and on the planning process and on some of the things we're working on around leadership and change. And then, of course, time for your questions. So let me just say that now that I've rounded the corner of about six months, I guess, as your interim leader, I continue to be extremely energized about the prospects for this university. I hope you have noticed, at least temporarily, a more positive reflection in the media about our campus. That has been something I've worked on hard and that my colleagues have as well, and I think it's beginning to help us with some key constituencies who we hope will take a very positive look at what we're doing and our value to the state, to the city of Boston, to our students. That narrative is extremely important. We need to be able to convey all that we represent, all of the work that you do to make this the excellent university that it is to be for our very distinctive student body, our very distinctive and deserving student body. So we're working hard on communications because we know that that's critical to citizen support for what we do, and that is why it's an important mission for me. At our next meeting, we will update you on how we're doing with advancement. There are a lot of very positive signs, but again, those numbers don't close till the end of the year, so rather than report numbers that aren't completely definitive yet, I want to wait until we come together again in the spring. But early indications are extremely positive. I've been spending a lot more of my time on the road, talking to donors and potential donors, and I am hearing, I have to tell you, nothing but positive support from them, including people who have not been in contact with the university, sometimes for decades, who are hearing from us for the very first time. And what they have to say, it's really quite, I think you'd be very proud of what they have to say. They tell me, "I haven't heard from anybody on campus in like 20 years or 30 years, but I am eternally grateful for what the University of Massachusetts, Boston, did for me." I've talked to chief litigators and all kinds of important people in New York City. I'm leaving for California tomorrow to talk to donors in San Francisco and Palo Alto, but what I'm hearing from all of them is the same. "I really value what UMass Boston did, and I'd like to give back. You need to ask me, but I'm here for you." And that is music to my ears and I'm sure will be to yours as well. So there's a lot to be said for the investments we're making in advancement. I think it's beginning to fire on all cylinders, so more on that later on this year. All right, with those preliminary remarks in mind and with the understanding that there will be plenty of time for questions, answers, and comments as we finish the presentation, I give you Kathleen Curly. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. The first Ms. Chancellor Newman just mentioned, the first topic that we'll talk about this morning is to provide some additional information and context around the university's budget. With the mic, how's that? A little better? Okay, so the first thing to share this morning is some information around the operating margin trend of the university. So here we've got the operating margin information for the past five years as well as the current year. So as you'll see, we are heading in the right direction here. We did last year, for the first time in several years, have a positive operating margin. This is a result of the fact that budgeting is not always an exact science, but as we took steps, really difficult steps that everybody in the room here helped with, we were able to make some structural changes in the budget that we're able to, will be carried through for this year and subsequent years to help us have the operating expenses more closely aligned with revenue. We did wind up realizing a little bit of extra savings on some of the accruals that we have with the budget, where we have sick banks and leave banks that, as we had less employees, those came down. So we did realize a little bit of savings, and that gets rolled over into future years. On use of reserves, there's been some questions around reserves in the university, and we've talked about reserves in prior town halls, so I wanted to just spend a little bit of time about reserves this morning. Reserves are an important part of the university's financial picture. The University of Massachusetts itself has a reserve policy that speaks to reserves that they've been working on. But really, when you think about reserves, it's important to plan that regular recurring operating expenses, the expenses that we have for instruction and student support and operating our buildings, these are all items that we need to keep, to be covered by recurring revenues. You don't use reserves to cover these kinds of things if you want to be in business on a long-term basis. So we've worked really hard to get the budget structurally aligned, so that we're doing that, so that we have our recurring revenues, state appropriation, student tuition and fees, sponsored research, advancement, gift income, all those kinds of things, being able to support the operations of the university. Also, just to point out, the university system as a whole also wants to make sure campuses keep this in mind and says, "You can't do this," generally speaking, "to allow a campus to balance its budget." But you'll see, you know, we've had our reserves go down over the past several years because of our financial difficulty. We're now getting to the point where we can stabilize that and begin to plan for the future. Fiscal '19 process. So we did go through fiscal '19 to build a more open and transparent budget process. Now that we're underway, there's a number of items that we're doing to monitor the budget. The first is to really take a look at how our actual expenses and actual activity is being deployed compared to the budget as we planned. So the Budget Office is in the process of working with departments across the university to monitor spending compared to the budget plan and compare it to prior years on a quarterly basis. Everybody should have received their first quarter financial information. It's out there on Xythos, and we'll be looking, budget owners will be looking to, for significant kinds of changes, explain that and be able to talk with budget about that as we move forward into the planning process for next year. There's also key important data that we're looking at throughout the year. Tuition and fee revenue analysis is top priority of the university. Many people have been involved with this, really understanding what does our enrollment look like, what is the money that's associated with that enrollment, what's the financial aid associated with that enrollment? So we're looking at the fall, and we've, you know, we've talked about that some, there'll be more, looking at how we finish half-year, we get to the end of the semester, as Chancellor Newman alluded to, how does our enrollment from the fall carry over into the spring, and then also plans for the summer. What can we do in the summer to really help students advance their studies there as well? We also are looking at monthly expense projections on the other side, so that we can really track and make sure that we can look at issues in real time as they're coming, as they're developing, as opposed to looking at several months after the fact. Carryforward, we've talked a little bit about that in prior town halls. We will be looking mid-year to see if there's opportunities for us to release more carryforward than's already been released. We are allowing carryforward right now for capital purchases and startup projects, $10,000 amounts for PIs. Tom Miller in the provost office is available to help anybody who has questions, concerns, just trying to figure out how that carryforward actually gets implemented. So I'd encourage you, you know, reach out to him if there's questions about any one has about their own carryforwards, about how that would work. But we really are trying to commit to making as much carryforward as we possibly can be available and also be able to meet the university's operating margin targets. So here I would just say, the more plans you have to share with us, the easier it is for us to do that, because then we can work collaboratively to figure out how can we get to the point where we can have the money be available to do the things that need to be done. So basic takeaway from fiscal '19 is, as we adopted the budget this year, we do have a 0% operating margin for this year. We're trying to be balanced. It's not going to be easy for us, but we don't think that we will be able to do this by the time we get to the end of the year. To talk a little bit about some of the results of the process I just was referring to, we started out the year with just over about a half million dollars. Yep? Sure. Okay, just a second, we'll get that. Is that a little better? Is that helpful? Okay. So we started out with a half a million dollars of revenue, with all things being said and done. Some of the changes that we're expecting on the revenue side right now, we do expect state appropriation to be slightly higher than we originally, than we originally projected. Net tuition and fees, unfortunately, at this point by the end of the year, we are projecting to be close to $5 million below where we were in the budget. There is some opportunities for us to influence that number as time progresses, but this is conservative estimate, primarily coming from adjustments coming out of last year in our lower enrollment and some of the activity that went on in the summer previously. Parking, we're behind on parking. We've had delays in rates and implementation there, some from the construction side, as well as we've been negotiating rates, so we've got, we've got some less money there than we had originally planned in the budget. Indirect costs, the allowance from grants and contracts, RTF, down slightly from original plans. And then we've, just as we look across the university, for other revenue, small amount. But on the expense side, we also have some news that offsets some of this. Salaries and fringe benefits, we are trending lower here. We do have costs for collective bargaining put into this number, but we have, we've had, you know, we've got vacancy savings that's being realized to make the number lower, so we're looking at some overall, at the end of the year, having less salary-infringed benefits costs than originally planned. And then interest, we continue to work with the building authority to ensure that all the capital records, plans are in sync, and we have an adjustment with the interest expense for this year. We're almost to the end of that process, so our projects, as we'll talk a little bit later today, are completing. We have less of them, and we've got the records more in alignment. So, you know, overall, we're looking here, that, you know, million and a half dollars off, we're early in the year. There's some things that we'll be able to do to address that. So some of those things specifically is on the revenue side. We have the potential to do a lot better on spring enrollment than we had in prior years. The numbers I showed you would make the assumption that what happened last year is what is going to happen this year. We would, we're taking steps to help ensure that that won't be the case. So we'll talk a little bit about that, but you know, to the extent our revenue in the spring is better than last year, that helps us with our financial picture. We also are expecting, as the chancellor said, increased gift revenue. There's been a lot of activity underway with our donors, and we'll be looking to incorporate that into our planning. And then summer revenue is a big topic, really looking at how can we take a look at our summer program, increase enrollment here, looking at things like potentially lower fees, targeted marketing, engaging faculty and staff about how we can really improve our summer program to allow increased student success as well as increased revenue. We also do have some necessary costs we need to factor in, so an interest of full disclosure, and we're working on these. As we've opened up the residence halls, we've been working to align what our original plans were with what we actually seen, but one things we have seen is we have increased the shuttle service a little bit more to provide for our students in the residence halls, some more late and weekend hours. So we've got, we've got that, working closely with Student Affairs and with the folks in the residence hall. We have made an investment in university advancement to bring on a new vice chancellor and in some of the activities, so we're working on that. The tax laws changed this year. Unfortunately, with Tax Reform Act, well, there was a lot of benefits to other portions of the taxpayers. Universities were not a big winner in this. And employee parking, the pre-tax benefit that employees benefit from, it still exists for employees, but now universities are being taxed on it. So we're working closely with the system office on that, but that's a new tax for universities that we didn't have to pay in the past. So we are fully committed to offering this benefit to our employees, but we are working on figuring out what that means to our budget, because this wasn't something that even had been planned when they were originally talking about the Tax Reform Act, when it was being discussed in Congress. And then last but not least, we are also working with Capstone Development and Student Affairs and COCM around revamping some of the security in the residence halls, so we're going to be, some of that's going to be capital investment from the project for money that's already there, and some of it will be, how do we actually have security staffed? So we're working on that, too. As I was saying, our initial data coming in on spring enrollment is positive. Freshmen living in the residence hall has made a difference. We are now seeing that as folks register for spring semester, 22% higher as of November 26 than last year for registration rates. So if you look in here in the residence hall, 81% of the students as of November 26 have registered for the spring semester. That compares to 59% for the student body outside, not living in the residence halls, and gives us close to a 70% registration rate for freshmen as a whole. So that's fantastic. I mean, personally, I'd like to thank everybody who's been working with our freshmen and working on this, this makes a difference. So, you know, efforts like this will be positive for the university, and we wanted to share this data that we have here. 20, we're not going to spend a lot of time talking on 20 today, but just to follow up from a little bit what we talked about in the October town hall, we do, for us, for next year, do have still that second year big uptick in depreciation and interest. So we are looking at, right now on paper, starting the year with a budget deficit, and we're doing several things to help close that, so that we can make that be as small as possible. Some of what we'll do before we get super excited about this is we are going to look at second quarter results for the current year, sort of see where we are currently, also look at what the system's putting out there for guidance, looking at some of our enrollment activity and all the work that's being done, so that by the time January comes around, we'll have more specific guidance for some of our, for our vice chancellors and our deans and all folks involved with the budget process. And there'll be meetings being held and guidance that comes out. And then after that point, we'll be in the position to talk more with the campus community about that as well. And also with this, also, as we'll talk more in the presentation, efforts underway for increased advocacy around additional revenue sources for the university to really help address some of these legacy issues that are existing related to the depreciation and So as we also look, we're also got for some very positive outlook for the fall 2019 freshman class. Lisa Johnson and the enrollment management team and the graduate enrollment folks and CAPS, everybody's underway to get the next class in place. Just some real positive metrics here, open house attendance, up 132%. I mean, hopefully you've seen people on campus, please come out and help us when we have these open houses, but I mean, big excitement with the university. Freshman applications currently up 18.2%. Early action applications up 19.2% and completed actions, applications are up 20%. We're working closely with COCM. Applications for housing interests are up close to 20% and the completed applications are not much farther behind. This really helps us plan, get some of the residence hall information together. Even applications for commuters, they're up, 17.4%. Completed applications, close to 20. We're making a concentrated effort on out-of-state and New England regional exchange applications in addition to our undergraduate in-state, in-state residents. These are up, too, trending up, 17.4%, 19.8% on completed applications. International applications, despite all that's going on in the world and the difficulties that we do have with international students in general in the United States, they're up 7.3% right now, and our applications are up 9.3%. So it's still a very positive environment for international students to come here and study on our particular campus. And our in-state applications, we've been out and about all around the state, and they're up 19%. Completed applications up 16.8%. So we're looking at, this activity is positive for us. This really helps us in our budget, and I'm just encouraging, this is someplace where every single one of us can help, is we look to enroll freshman class, transfers, graduate students, and the like. And we wanted to share this at this time to really see that, you know, those efforts, if you have questions, are they working? Well, here's some proof that they, in fact, are. Parking fees, to change to another topic, this is a quest that came up, and I just wanted to spend a little bit of time on parking. Parking under Chapter 150, we are bargaining parking with all of our collective bargaining unions. It's concluded with some unions, and we're still in the process with others. So in respect to that process, I mean, Chapter 150 puts out a pretty prescribed process for how this works. We're going to limit this discussion to what we've offered in bargaining to date and what we've agreed to in some cases. So if we succeed from, to get relief from existing parking debt, we will reopen negotiations with our unions and consider parking rate reductions. So I mean, we're working really hard to get that money. We don't yet have it, though. So right now, we're planning, what do we need the rates to do to cover our costs? But should we be successful, and there's lots of efforts underway here, then we will, we have agreed that we will open, reopen negotiations to have lower rates. We also are committed that our students are having the lowest rate parking rates available. This is really important. We want to make sure that students have, every effort's made to help parking be as affordable as it possibly can for our students. So as we go through the bargaining, should rates change where we need to make adjustments in the student rates to lower them, we will do that. So notification will go out to students, and so that students can feel comfortable that they will be able to avail themselves of the lowest rates that the university has to offer. And lastly, we're open to income graduated parking rates from employees that might impact, mitigate the impact of parking fees on those who earn the least. So these are all things that are being negotiated at the bargaining table, and, you know, as agreements are negotiated, there'll be information about the specifics around particular agreements with the bargaining unit members of those respective units. And next, I'm going to turn over now to return to Chancellor Newman for her to update you a little bit more on the legacy debt with the state and Bayside as well.
Thank you. So I just wanted to let you know that I've been working pretty hard on this issue, and a lot of that work has to happen in very fairly private settings, but I do feel it's important for you to be informed about as much as I can, these activities. So along with President Mn, I've met with the Senate President, with the Speaker of the House, with the entire Boston delegation, and those conversations continue. I'm sure all of you saw the Boston Globe editorial, which recognized the impact of the debt on our campus from its very beginnings. I have asked for a joint planning effort. I hope that that will be successful. I'm optimistic about it. It is something that I think will be more productive than some of the conversations that were going on in the past. I'm trying to pose this as a, an effort to find a reasonable glide path that will help to lessen the tax, in a sense, or the cost and impact of the principal that is sitting on our books, and shorten the time to that, the curing of that principle. The legislature is not in session now. When it comes back into session in January, I hope those conversations are going to continue, and a variety of parties are helping to see that that happens. I do think that this is the most appropriate venue, and I know many of you agree, to seek that support. It is, after all, where it began. But I do want to reiterate, and I know not everyone agrees with me, but the people who are in that building, in the State House, those people are not the ones that created this legacy debt. And I think it's very important to recognize that we need their help and their support, and indicating that we recognize they weren't the originators of it is an important part of how we solicit that support in addition to being true, in my opinion. But it's not a given, and it's not likely to be imminent. If we're fortunate, it will be an agreement that we can craft that will take effect over time and put us on a better glide path. In my opinion, that is the best we can hope for, and it is what I am arguing for. I want to see us reduce that debt by curing the principal on an accelerated basis, so the debt itself and the interest that we are having to bear declines in a reasonable fashion. I can't guarantee you that this is going to come to pass. I can guarantee you that I'm going to work as hard as I possibly can and have been and will continue to, to try and ensure that that's the outcome. I need your support. I need us to have a reasonable posture toward our colleagues in the State House in order to encourage their cooperation. And that is, in my judgment, the very best way to go about an actual solution. Other things may, other activities may make people feel better in the short term, but they don't achieve what we need to achieve. So this is my judgment about the best way to go forward, and I am pleased to say that I've received positive signals in a lot of different corners, but those are just signals and they are not answers, and it takes time to achieve any kind of goal of that kind and that complexity. But that's what, where I'm headed. Bayside. Bayside is advancing. The finalists, we've gone through many, many months of review of proposals from developers. There are a lot of exciting opportunities here. I do think Bayside holds the key to the campus's future in many respects, not just financial, but in terms of academic opportunity. The finalists will begin making their last offers in January. They are now reviewing, or will be shortly reviewing, some technical materials, which will give us an indication of their sort of final offers. Once a winner has been approved, the permitting process begins. I am not a real estate developer, that is for damn sure. I'm learning a lot about it, but I'm not a real estate developer, but I understand that the permitting process, which is really crucial to how Bayside actually ends up functioning as a new neighborhood, takes about two years. This is a process of due diligence, it's a process of testing everything from the land itself to tracing through the titles on it, and it takes quite a while, much longer than I thought. And so revenue from Bayside, when it begins to flow, is not a near-term thing. It will be, I think, quite substantial at the end of the day, or later on in the day, but it isn't something that's going to happen tomorrow. I think probably the real economic benefits, the substantial economic benefits, are about four to five years down the road. But I don't really know exactly, to be honest. This is a process of unfolding, of development and offers, and it's, it's not something that has a very exact timetable. So the best I can do is look at what other developments of this size and complexity have required to come to fruition, and two years seems to be about the norm. I do think that Bayside is crucial to the development of the university, especially to its academic strength and to the opportunities that we can convey to our students and to our faculty researchers. I am hoping that we are going to see firms come into that space that are interested in investing in the research of our faculty, providing opportunities for internships and later jobs for our students, and opportunities in the more immediate sense for our neighbors who are looking to that opportunity for construction jobs, for retail jobs, for employment in laboratories, or whatever is going to be built there. And I feel a very strong sense of commitment to our neighbors in Dorchester, in Matapan, Roxbury, and all the areas around us who contribute students to us and whose people are looking forward to those employment possibilities. We've got a lot of work to work on the transportation elements around Bayside. I don't need to tell you, you know better than I do about the traffic congestion that is already in the area. We certainly don't want to see that exacerbated. I've heard some good suggestions from our colleagues in the School for the Environment about how we might think about that mitigation, and I appreciate their input, and we'll look forward to more of it when we find out who the developer is. So there's a lot of work to be done, but at the end of the day, I do believe this is going to be an extraordinary opportunity, the last real waterfront neighborhood in the city of Boston. That is an enormously exciting opportunity. When the financial benefits from Bayside begin to be realized, a lot of objectives are going to be on the table, and whoever your chancellor is at that point is going to have a lot to think about, along with the rest of you, about how those resources should be deployed. I am not going to commit, I couldn't commit to any particular combination of them now. I don't even know what those real opportunities will be or when. But I do think, and I am confident in saying this much, that the well-being, and I mean that in every respect, of our students, our faculty, and our staff will loom very large among those priorities, alongside the academic and infrastructure improvements that this campus needs in order to realize its full potential. Bayside is not the only thing we have going for us. There are lots of other opportunities ahead of us, but it is a pretty substantial one. And when those benefits come through, everything will be on the table for us all to debate. But I do need you to understand and recognize that is a long-term solution. It's important, but it's long-term. It's not going to happen tomorrow. It's not going to happen next year. It's probably not going to happen the year after that either. And in the meantime, we have a budget to balance and we have bills to pay. So we're trying to balance out all of those future possibilities. I also would like, again, to keep attention where I think it belongs in looking for collaborative opportunities for debt relief, and they don't all reside there. I've asked Marie if she could kind I've asked Marie if she could comment as well about the relationship between Bayside parking and on-campus parking. I know that's a question.
Just really quickly, I just wanted to respond to something that had been raised by a couple of the unions, which is a good question, involving the framework that we've offered and, in some cases, agreed to on parking with the unions, because that framework provides that lower-cost parking options will be provided at Bayside, essentially, what we kind of think of as off-campus parking. And then, on-campus parking, more convenient parking, will be at a higher rate. So, the question has come up, well, what happens when there's no more Bayside? Right? Is that the end of the lower-cost options? And so, all these negotiations that we're having are really, you know, kind of, you could be selling us a pig in a poke, because you're going to do away with the lower-cost option. So, we're still at the bargaining table on that, so I, I don't want to say too much outside the confines of the collective bargaining agreement, other than maybe letting you know that we have offered to commit that we will absolutely maintain lower-cost options when Bayside goes away, that will be lower than whatever on-campus rates we have at the time, and we look forward to speaking about that more at the bargaining table.
Good morning. I'm Garrett Smith. I work in the chancellor's office. I'm going to speak to you about student success for a few minutes. And hopefully, I'm going to do it not from the podium. Oh, I need one more tool. I wanted to remind everyone of a couple contextual factors before I dive into some of the work that we're doing. The first is on this slide. So, we have invested heavily in student success over the past 10 years, and particularly if we look at freshman graduation rates, we've seen increases of 15 points in the six-year graduation rate over the last 10 years. This is pretty incredible. So, I've just put a little bit of detail about that on this slide. On the left-hand side are some of the initiatives that we've taken on. So, we have a heavy emphasis on, on-track indicators through our degree audit tools, through the four-year degree plans for every major. I'm looking at Joan Becker as I talk about this. Proactive advising to support students getting on, starting on track, staying on track. We've invested heavily in the professional advisors to, to further this work. I could say a million things about that, but the investment has been made in an incredible way to support students. And we've built these learning communities, freshman learning communities targeted in particular colleges, or that are population-based. There's a whole variety of other things, I think, about tutoring, support services, and other things that are happening. We've made all kinds of investments, and that's paid off in our four-year graduation rate, which is the top chart on the right-hand side, which you can see trending up over time, and it's paid off in our six-year graduation rate, which is trending up over time and is on the bottom on the right-hand side. I'm not going to go through the exact detail, but you can look at the trend. And each of the number, each of the years here is for a cohort year. So, on the bottom chart, it goes from the, the freshmen who began in 1997 up to the freshmen who began in 2011. So, this is a really positive story and a context in which we're trying to do better. Now, unfortunately, 48% graduation rate for freshmen isn't as good as we'd like it to be. I sort of think it's great that we've made all this progress, but it's still unacceptable for each of our freshmen that comes in, that they have about a 50% chance of graduating with us. And so, we need to do better. And if we look at our one-year retention rate, which is on the right-hand side, we could do better, and we've flatlined over the last several years. And so, how can we get that to move on an up, how can we get each of these to move on a further upward trajectory? And that's the context in which we set really aggressive goals, which I'm not going to talk about in depth, but a few of those goals around retention are on the left-hand side of this slide, and in which we've designed a whole portfolio of initiatives, a few of which are on the right-hand side of this slide. And I talked about these at the last town hall, or I talked about a number of these. Again, these are just representative, they're more. These are only focused on undergrad, there are lots of graduate initiatives, there are more beyond this in undergrad. But we're going to use data. We're going to execute student support campaigns using predictive analytics. A simple example of this is right now during the registration season, we can look at whether a student is registered or unregistered. If they're unregistered for the next semester, that's predictive of the fact that they might not be here next semester. And so, we can use that data to go out and target those students and provide support, help them to eliminate holds, help them to resolve financial issues that they have or what have you, to get them registered. So, there are a lot of things happening in that first initiative around using data to support students who are at risk. The second one is around using common metrics, tools, and practices to strengthen undergraduate advising. The third here is about removing barriers to student progression, making sure that we eliminate bottlenecks for courses that are hard to get, or that we support students in these courses that are hard to get through, that have high rates of students receiving Ds or Fs or withdrawing, or withdrawing from the class. That's the so-called DFW rate. A fourth big initiative is about opening the residence halls, and the chancellor shared some of the data that we're already seeing about the positive impact that that can have on student retention. So, I'm just reminding you of some of what I described last time around aggressive goals and a set of initiatives around student success. I wanted to take you into one particular initiative that happened this fall, that many of you participated in, that I think has, has just shown some really positive momentum and has been a great initiative targeted at supporting students. I just wanted to share a bit more data about this early alert campaign that was piloted this fall. So, Academic Support Services and the Registrar, supported by the advisors and a lot of hard work from faculty, took on this initiative, where the objective was to provide early feedback to students about their performance in their courses. So, think of it as getting a midterm grade, or even a little bit earlier grade on how they're doing. And the idea was to support academically at-risk students. So, what did we do? We asked faculty volunteers to provide feedback on student performance. We enabled that through functionality that already existed in Wiser, the midterm roster functionality, where faculty could go in and, and look at their roster of students and say, are the students on track? Or satisfactory, which was green? Are they at risk, which is yellow, or caution? Or are they red, which is they're on track, they're failing, on track to, to not be successful in the course? And we launched this in the middle of October, and once faculty inputted this green, yellow, red, we were, advisors and others reached out to students to offer support. And so, the idea was to create more data about how students were doing, so that students had awareness, advisors had awareness, faculty had awareness, and then create some communication and dialogue about that, hopefully to put students on the right track. What happened? 165 faculty volunteered to participate and provided midterm grades on their students. It was really incredible participation in 145 courses and 350 sections. There were over 8,000 midterms, midterm grades entered. You can see the numbers in terms of satisfactory, which was green, caution, which was yellow, and failing, which was red. I think something incredible here is 5,700 times, students received positive feedback on how they were doing in the course. So, this wasn't just about flagging students who were at risk, it was about encouraging students who were doing well. So, I think that, that was just a really important aspect of the initiative. And over 5,000 students received at least one alert. We really targeted gateway freshman courses, and there was a lot of participation in, in courses like English 101, first-year seminar, and 100-level math courses. What happened? It's a little bit too early to say, did this help student grades? Did this help them come back for next semester? And so, right now, the data that we have is more about perception of, of people who participated, and so IR helped us run a survey, and I'm just presenting a little bit of data. This is not scientific. IR would probably jump on me if I didn't say that, but this is a little bit of the data that, that we got back from people who participated. So, we asked the question, do you think this type of early alert pilot is worthwhile in supporting student success? And there were options which I would have color-coded, I color-coded green, or I would have color-coded red, if people didn't think that this was worthwhile, and just about everyone said, this is worthwhile. We didn't ask the students that exact question, so I'm only showing you faculty and advisor data. Another question we asked was, do you think the early alert pilot had positive impact? So, not just was it worthwhile, but did this have actual impact on student success? And you can see the, the ratings that people gave. It's a, it's a little bit more mixed, but again, there's, there's not really much read here, one or two people. Most people said, yeah, I think this had some impact. And by the way, there were open-ended questions, and so we received a ton of feedback, both unsolicited and through the survey, and, and, and so we have a lot of ideas about how we can do this better and stronger in the spring. So, that's just a little taste of one initiative within student success. I think, I consider it a huge win. This was something we kicked off with very little advance notice. It was a trip up to Lowell that inspired us to do this, where they said, we, we do these early alerts, we think it works really well, and faculty love it, and students think it has a positive impact. And we said, well, we can do that, and we kicked it off with about, I don't know, a few weeks of notice in October, and we still got incredible participation and pretty good feedback from it. And so, I think we're excited to see how this can be even better in the spring. Okay, I'll pause there on student success, and then tell you just a quick minute about online. As you know, we've set, the system has set a goal for aggressive growth of online revenue, and we have set a similarly aggressive goal. A couple things, I just wanted to highlight a couple things that are happening in this realm to try and support this opportunity for us and for our students. The first is that we are working to reinstitute the revenue-sharing program that used to exist within CAPS, that shares some, some revenue from online programs directly back to departments so that they can reinvest those dollars in their programs. We view this as a really fundamental and critical resource or incentive to help programs move, move in a direction of growing their online programs. And we've heard time and time again from departments that this was something in the past that gave them the ability to invest and to grow their programs, and so we want, we're trying to bring this back. It's hard when our financial situation is what it is. As I look at Tom Miller from Academic Affairs, it's hard to find the dollars to do this, but we're trying to find a way to reopen this revenue-sharing program so that programs can grow. A second thing that we're considering doing is starting to treat online courses as they are, which is just another delivery mechanism for, for our courses and our content. I don't think of online education for our matriculated students as continuing education, yet we call it continuing education. It lives off in this CAPS world where students have to pay a different rate for it, their scholarships don't apply, their waivers don't apply, and it's, and it's more difficult for faculty to teach online on load. And so, we're considering how we can change that and streamline it and make this an easier option for faculty and for students. We think that the way to do that would simply to be to, to remove the C, really simple, remove the C from the course name, and all of those systems that underpin it would change, and we're thinking that through and trying to think about, is that the right way to do it, or is there a more nuanced way to do it to achieve the benefits that we think would come from taking online out of continuing education? And the third is, we're trying to grow summer. So, the chancellor has committed to reducing our rates for the summer term. Over the last 10 years, our rates have gotten out of step with others in the marketplace, others in the city. So, if you compare our online rates to Lowell or to some of the Boston competitors, we've started to get higher and higher. The CAPS team has, has been pounding, I see Michael Toll, so the CAPS team has been talking about how we've been getting more and more out of step with the market. It's harder to matriculate, it's, it's harder to, to get non-matriculated students to come into our summer programs. And so, we've committed to lowering the price, taking an experiment to see if we can bring back some of the students that we had 10, 20 years ago in, into the summer program. And we're doing a number of other things around the marketing of summer to try and really get a boost this year, which would benefit our on-ground summer program and our online summer program, which is about 30 or 40% of that business. I'll pause there, again, it's just a taste of online, but, but I think those are the critical things that are happening.
Yeah, let's hear it for all of you, and Garrett and his colleagues, and Joan and everybody else who's worked so hard on this. It really does have tremendous possibilities and is emblematic of what I hope our approach is going to be going forward. So, actually, I hate that word, "going forward," it sounds like such crap, but anyway, I'm not going to use that again. In the future, we'll call it "in the future." Okay, I want to talk to you a little bit about the residence halls, because, of course, it's been in the news, and I know you've all been reading the news. I hope you've also been reading our own student newspaper for a different perspective, which has been quite positive, and I'm, I'm pleased to, to see that. So, here are some of the things to know about the residence halls. First of all, they are very well-attended. They're about 98% occupancy. We have a lot of interest in them coming, going forward. You saw the numbers for next year's class, a big upshift in, in all respects, in interest in living in the residence halls, and that's going to help us with many different aspects of our, our recruitment. I also want to give a shout-out to Gail DeSabatino and her staff, her very hard-working staff, as well as all of the RAs, who are our own students, who are there day and night. Let's hear it for them. I have had the pleasure of meeting with all of them. I have been myself to eat four or five times in the dorm. I attended the Battle of the Chefs, which was great. We had chefs from BU, where, BU, help me, Gail, where were the chefs from? Suffolk? BU? Right. So, a bunch of area chefs, and they, they come and they, they bring their very best stuff, and they set up stations, and they compete to see who, who wins, and of course we won, of course we won. But it was wonderful. The students were there, you know, in huge numbers, and we were all eating together, and it was a great, a great spirit. I think on, is it Monday night? Or was it last night that you had the big breakfast at nine? Oh, it's coming up, next Monday, so they're having, our colleagues at SEDEXO are working very, very hard to do better for the students and to, to make the dining experience an enjoyable one. So, I've gone to taste the food myself, because I wanted to see. When the Globe article that was critical of the, of the dorms came out, I went to the dorms myself between, at about 11 o'clock at night, and I interviewed every student I could find in any of the, not in their rooms, but in any of the open lounges, reporters don't get everything straight. In any of the lounges, I went through every single lounge on every single floor, that's about 20 floors' worth in both buildings, and I left at about 1:30 in the morning. But in that time period, I talked to about 60 students who were still awake, mostly studying or doing Playstation or something, about their feelings about the dorms. And mostly, what I heard was that the article in the Globe, they felt was a serious exaggeration, but there were some underlying issues that were real and needed attention. I stood by the security gates in both buildings for about half an hour in each place, and I watched students coming in and out, and I looked at the security system, and I'll be honest with you, I concluded it wasn't sufficient. So, I went back to Capstone, and I have been in touch with Capstone pretty much every day since then, and said, this has to be redone. Capstone brought in a security analyst or specialist, whatever they are, consultant, and we are working on redoing the security system, because that's something that students feel passionately about, but even more, their parents feel passionately about. It's, you know, nobody expects dorm food is going to be restaurant quality, but they do expect that dorm security is going to be reliable, and so, it will be. And we put in some extra measures in between, which I know are not entirely popular, but I do want to thank our public safety staff for stepping up. Thank you, gentlemen. Let's hear for them. And ladies, they have been wonderful. They, they came immediately, they have been on, on duty pretty much 24/7, and until I see a security system that I'm totally satisfied with, I'm going to ask them to stay there. And our colleagues, again, at Capstone have been very cooperative, they understand why this is so important. It costs some to redo this, but that's what we have to do to be sure the dorms are working well. There are some additional outstanding punch-list items, they're working on them, that's not unusual for a project of this size, and I do have to say, they've been very good partners. This is a different kind of arrangement, it's becoming the, the norm. The Dartmouth campus has a three, P3, that's just broken ground, the Amherst campus has a P3, Northeastern has a P3. This is kind of becoming the way in which these projects are financed, and we have to figure out the right way to collaborate with these partners, and I'm confident that we will. But it's important to be sure that there are mechanisms for feedback, because I don't want to actually have to read it in the Boston Globe. I want to hear directly from students if their concerns, or their parents, or anybody else. So, I opened up a chancellor's hotline, it's really just an email address, but I answer every single, every single note that comes into me on that email, I answer personally. And we follow up. If there's anything I can't answer, we follow up and we get back to that person. So, we're intending to be as responsive as possible. It's the same online feedback email that you have for responding to anything you hear today. today, and I encourage you to use it, too. It's one of the ways I can communicate with you and try to be a problem solver. In addition to that hotline, we have RA meetings. We asked the RAs to meet with the students soon after that Globe article came out, just to check. You know, are there issues we should be aware of? That was extremely useful. And again, I thank the RAs for conducting those meetings. So the RA meetings, the chancellor's hotline, there is now a Dining Services Student Advisory Group and a student survey. We wanted an independent survey so that we could get a universal point of view, not just whoever the handful of people that a reporter or meet, right? The 60 students that I saw are not necessarily a representative sample. They're just who was up between 11 and 1 o'clock in the morning. That's not everybody. So we want to be sure that we get, we have feedback mechanisms. I am very confident that these residence halls were and are a game-changer for this campus. They have enabled us to provide a first-class opportunity of the kind that was never available to students here before. We still are 60% commuters, and we are likely to remain that way. And so we also have to do a better job by the students who are not living in the residence halls, meaning, open up more activities for them, ways for them to engage, ways to them to create tighter communities amongst themselves. And here, I look to the many student groups on campus for this, and I have met with all the student government leaders to talk about how we might enhance those opportunities. But all in all, having that choice, having that opportunity to recruit students, whatever their choices are in terms of their campus living, is a real enhancement to the campus and is key to our continuing success. So again, I want to thank Gail. I want to thank our enrollment management colleagues for bringing in students who are eager to experience this, and I want to assure all of you and anyone else out there who is listening by video, that we are going to stay on top of this and be sure that these are absolutely the most first-class dorms anybody's ever had or ever will have. Thank you.
Despite the various cuts that have been made to the faculty, the faculty back in 2016, when we had to defer filling some of the faculty slots that came open, we've been committing ourselves to a process of restoring, replenishing those spots. It'll be a little bit of a gradual process, but we're committed to bringing back the same number of faculty eventually that we had before the crisis hit. For our goals, our goals include to recruit top-level academics to the campus and to continue to enhance the diversity of the faculty. In September 1, starting September 1, 2018, we had 13 new tenure-track hires, two at the rank of professor, 11 at the rank of assistant professor, and there were two full-time clinical faculty hired in CNHS Nursing School. I'm not good at this. There, click. For this year, for FY '19, we have 18 tenure-track searches ongoing at this time. 14 of these are replacement lines. Three are what I call restored lines, which I'll come back to in a second. And one is a new line that was funded by a new endowment that came onto the campus. What I mean by restored lines is these are lines that were deferred, being filled back in 2016 or so, and these are the three that we've been able to add in for the next year. We also, I'll get to a 20% holdback on the next slide, which means we'll probably have approximately three or four more searches allowed or hires allowed for next year beyond these 18. But the 18 tenure-stream searches are taking place in the colleges that you see there. There are also two full-time NTT positions, one in CEHD, the School of Ed and Human Development, and one in the College of Management. And there's one visiting assistant professor that's been authorized for the College of Science and Math to recruit. And we've said and committed in Catherine's goals to the president's office that we want to keep improving our, the diversity of the faculty, and I wanted to give you an update on where we are on that. For 2017 and '18, we hired 13 tenure-stream people of those. Eight, or 61%, were female. Seven, or 54%, were members of a protected class. Two African-American, four Asian, and one self-identified as disabled. To date, among the 18 AY 2018 to '19 searches, two offers have been made and accepted by African-American candidates. Two offers are in process of being made to candidates in a protected class. And other departments have begun identifying potential opportunity hires that would be aimed at people in protected classes. So we're very enthusiastic about the progress that we think we're making here, and we look forward to continuing to replenish the faculty and to diversify it.
Okay. Next topic we want to update the campus community on a little bit is capital projects. So as we've come on campus this fall, I hope everyone is enjoying having less construction, less roads-changing, construction vehicles to try to dodge around and just have a sense more of peace and calmness here on campus. The utility corridor and roadway relocation, affectionately known as the UCRR, is almost complete at this point. So the roadways have opened as they will be permanently configured this fall. Final paving, roadway striping, landscaping is being put in place. All utilities have cut over to the new loop, which was really the overall goal of that project. We've got the crosswalk to the parking garage is one of the last things that's underway. You can go out and see the curb cuts and that work being done. So this project is pretty much coming to close. The residence halls, as the chancellor mentioned, those are completed, they're occupied. We're working with Capstone Development on the final punch list items, but that project is pretty much, at this point, a successful completion. The west garage, also substantially complete. We do have some ongoing work that's been underway this fall. The elevators, getting those all, all four of them up and running. The automated payment system, also steps have been taken to get that completed. An additional signage to help park people who are parking in the garage find their way around. The crosswalk, which was necessary to make sure we have safe passage across the roadways, that's being completed. And then we do have a solar canopy that's going in on the top floor of the garage. It's a separate project, but it's underway to help us be, our commitment to the environment, and so that's underway. We'll have more information on that as that progresses. And then last, but not least, Dunkin' Donuts here in this building, completed and operating at the campus center. And this was done in partnership with SEDEXO through investment that SEDEXO's made into the campus as part of their contract here with the university. Whoops, sorry. Upcoming, next Monday, we're going to have a session on the RAB project here. I would encourage people who would like to have more information about vacating the Science Center and the renovations to existing academic buildings, come to that session, because we're going to have a lot more details at that than we have this morning, but I'll give you a high level this morning, and then there'll be time for more detail come Monday, when some of the team with the project is going to come out and talk with faculty and staff and the campus community about specifics. So as part of the overall substructure project, as we all know, vacating the Science Center is one of the enabling activities that needs to take place. So we're working on planning and working with campus community to be able to empty that building, to have it be completed. Right now, our goal is August 2019, so we're looking to, by the end of next summer, to get that plans in place and have work underway. As I said, there is a meeting Monday at 12 o'clock in the Ryan Lounge. So please come to that. It's open to everybody. We'll have the materials available if you can't come, but it's an opportunity for more details around this particular project. There are nine academic programs currently in the Science Center that are being moved out. That should say the Science Center, not the Campus Center. I apologize for that. We thought we got all the typos out of this, but I'll correct it for the final. Renovations, we're also splitting this project because of the timeliness and having to have the project be done by the end of next summer. We split it into two construction projects for the purposes of bidding and getting work underway. So the first one has to do with the work that's planned for Wheatley and McCormick Halls. That will begin this winter. And then following that will be some renovation work within the Healy Library and the Quinn Administration Building, which will begin in the spring. So they're just to be working on concurrent tracks, but we've split it up so that we could just get this going a little bit quicker. Second, after the, this enabling work's done with the Science Center, then we move on to the substructure project. So the revised scope for that has been completed over the summer. So now we've got, and we've talked about this at a previous construction meeting, that we've got a full scope. So this would be getting folks moved out of the Campus Center, making improvements to Wheatley and McCormick that would stabilize the substructure there, developing a quad for the campus, some additional parking for the campus, and demolishing the substructure that's here in the middle of the campus. We're going to begin design charrettes, which will be a way to get information out and get feedback and input from the campus community. So those are going to start in December, so there's going to be some information out about that for some stakeholders there to get work underway, and then as that progresses, we'll have more information available to the campus community. And then also, there are some smaller projects. There are some other activities within the Science Center that are a little bit more specialized that we're also be working on, is smaller projects, including the I-Hub for the data center and the machine shop, which is located in the Science Center. And then lastly, as the chancellor spoke about earlier, Bayside is another active construction project that's underway, or a project, I won't call it, it's not in construction, but project, so we're evaluating developers, and that will be moving along, as she had talked with us about earlier. So that sort of sums up a little bit where we are with capital projects, and I just would say just one final time, you know, please come Monday to learn more about some details there. Moving to planning, there's many planning efforts that are underway as well. The strategic plan, we're looking to, you know, that's sort of wrapping up some of the work that had been in the current one, getting a process underway there to begin the next stage of strategic planning for the university. We have an academic master plan, which I'm going to turn over to Emily to talk a little bit more about.
So the academic master plan of this campus doesn't exist, basically. There has been no document called an academic master plan, and so we are in the process of trying to make sure we have one. The first stage of this planning process has been to get the deans, all the deans, intensively involved in trying to figure out what the process should be on campus by which faculty put forward ideas for new academic programs, whether they're degree programs or certificate programs, or minors, or something else that's in between. One of the reasons, I can say pretty frankly, I think, one of the reasons that we ended up in a problematic budgetary situation in the past is that we were implementing new programs without always being 100% sure that they would generate revenue, without always being 100% sure that they would be successful in the market. And so we need to take a much more careful look at what programs are needed for academic reasons, for pedagogical reasons, to keep up as a 21st century university, but also how those programs that we want to move to affect the bottom line of the university. So the deans are very busily working. I expect them to come up with a set of processes by maybe February that we would be putting out then for discussion. What we're looking to do, basically, is, we all know that we have a very long and cumbersome process for approving new degrees on this campus that ends up with, what goes through stage one, stage two, ends up with Board of Trustees approval and Board of Higher Ed approval, and takes a couple of years in many cases, or never happens. But we also have a quicker option for putting in place things like minors or certificates, non-degree programs, that will fill a niche in the market that'll help us attract new students to campus and so forth. So the deans are looking at a way to have a two-stage or a two-piece process. One, that where we fast-track ideas that look like slam dunk, ideas that will be revenue generators or attract a new set of students onto campus in an effective way, versus the slower model, which we have to think about much more carefully to make sure that we're examining all of the budgetary implications, as well as the academic implications. As part of the academic master planning initiative, we're also looking at how to make our A-Quad reviews a little more meaningful to build resource implications into the A-Quad reviews in a way that rewards programs that come out with very positive A-Qads and that raises questions that need to be solved about programs that come out with less successful A-Qads. And as part of that, we're also probably in the, the new task force that I've appointed that's going to be looking at centers and institutes. We're going to be looking also at their role in the academic planning process. How do we evaluate the centers and institutes so that we can decide what contributions they're making and reward the centers and institutes that are making great contributions to the academic side, as well as helping them to become more self-supporting as institutes that, inasmuch as they would be dependent on external funds. Bill Kiernan is the dean of the College of Global Inclusion and is, has been the head of the ICI, the institute, before he became the dean. He's going to be leading the task force to try to guide research institutes to figure out ways to become more self-supporting, to draw in more funds through grant applications and through development funds. So we're looking forward to progress in that area as well.
Additional planning efforts underway, the campus master plan. As you may be aware, there's a 25-year plan. This plan is the physical blueprint for the campus in the strategic plan. Phase one is nearing completion, and we're almost done, which would have been the construction that's gone on since the plan's inception over the past 10 years. So now work will begin under phase two. I'm really looking at goals in the strategic plan, the academic plan that Emily just spoke of, and we'll also be in part informed by the future of Bayside and what kinds of academic opportunities and other opportunities we will have for the campus community as that parcel develops. This will be aligned with the university capital plan and availability of funding. So this work is also going to be underway, getting that going this academic year. The capital plan, briefly, there's, the university system has adopted the last Board of Trustees meeting, the fiscal '19 to '23 Consolidated Capital Plan. For us, this is a big step in improvement of actually getting all our capital activity in one area. We've got state funding, primarily coming for the substructure project. We've got Oumba funding, the borrowing that the university has, and then also locally-funded projects. These are projects that are funded out of the depreciation that the university generates in its operating budget. For '19, the approval of the projects for '19 did go out to departments that had requested For '19, the approval of the projects for '19 did go out to departments that had requested those in the budget process. That plan has been, there's some more information coming from the Budget Office about how the specifics of this will work, you know, in terms of the accounting, and information to get things set up for final, actual approvals in the systems. Procurement has the plans, so they can work with folks about actually buying and soliciting bids for activity that needs to place under here. And then this will be information that we'll be looking at to work concurrently with the 20-budget process so that we can put all this stuff in an organized and cohesive way. So that sort of sums up a little bit about some of the planning efforts, and next we'll talk some about excellence in leadership and management.
This will be really quick, but we just wanted to touch on this because in the goals that are up on the website now that came in from all the different units and colleges and schools, there was sort of a theme, probably no surprise to any of us, of needing to improve in some of these areas, you know, feeling like our processes maybe don't support us as we need them to, and getting things done, and maybe more to the point, getting them done quickly, and imagine that online instead of, you know, running paper all over campus. So those are just some recurring themes that we see. And we also see in people's goals, some steps that are being either envisioned or underway in various stages of development to begin to address those. So selfishly, to just take a second to update you on what's going on just in HR in my shop, where I think we have more than our fair share of processes that need to be improved. Our team has undertaken sort of an organizational review, a self-study, in which a number of you participated, and thank you for doing that. So that's done now, and we're working on the implementation plan, and we'll implement within the next few weeks, within a month, say. And we saw then, it was interesting to see because of that, in other people's goals that our colleagues in university relations have a review of some of their processes underway. And also, I think Facilities is almost done with theirs, maybe they are done, just focused on trying to improve the service delivery quality so that all of us can more quickly get our work done and support each other better, instead of following up with each other all the time to see where things are. And then I think related to that is the FY '20 budget planning process, because, you know, some of what may emerge from these reviews is that we don't, the resources aren't aligned, or maybe people don't have things that they need to do a better job, or training that they need to do things more effectively, or we don't have other resources. So I think, understanding that we have serious budget constraints, at the same time, providing a mechanism by which those kinds of issues can surface and be dealt with and addressed, and just make sure we're aligning things as well as we can in an environment of constrained resources to maximize the ability that we have to positively impact some of these issues. Another opportunity that's related to all of that is the middle bullet there, the Shared Services, UMPO is the president's office. It's a system-wide initiative, focusing on shared services, and I know probably a lot of you have heard about it. Right now, it's focused on three areas, which is accounts payable, procurement, and payroll. And so there's working groups from all the campuses working on sort of assessing which elements of those functions might, or might not, benefit from a shared services model, and then also defining what shared services might include, you know, because it could include going to a central model in the president's office, or it could include going to a center of excellence on one campus. There's a lot of different forms that it takes, and Kathleen is on the committee overseeing it, so she's going to share a little bit more detail about that.
Thank you. So as Marie was saying, with the shared services, this is initiative that the system is really looking at to help us have some efficiencies in these particular areas so that we can put resources into the core mission of the university. So there is work underway in procurement, accounts payable, and payroll. Staff on our campus are involved with this, as well as staff throughout the university. Catherine sits in the advisory committee as the chancellor representative. All of the vice chancellors of administration, finance, so myself and all my peers are working closely with folks, if throughout the system, to ensure that our needs on our campus are met, as well as looking at how this might look. One of the ways we're going to look at that is really looking at key performance indicators, because if this isn't going to save us money, and it isn't going to give us better service, and we can't get our needs addressed, then it doesn't make sense for us. So by establishing key performance indicators, we can help to measure how this might look so that we can make sure that we do evaluate performance and get the support we need and have a governance model. There's lots of data that's being analyzed this fall about this to try to figure out how this might look, what this might look like. And then there'll be an initial plan delivered to President Meehan in December. That's just the plan. Then there'll be more work that'll be underway for that. We also will host some time on the campus. I know different areas of the university have had some ideas, recommendations. Please keep those coming to us, they're very helpful. And we will get some of the team, both from the president's office, as well as some time to get set up, to really have some more dialogue about that for folks who are interested in that more. So I think this is, this is an area that's underway, and I think you'll be hearing more about it as time goes on. A really important way for us to get the services we need in a way that could hopefully be a little bit more cost-effective for us down the road.
All right. Thank you for being so patient. Appreciate it. Very good of you to sit through all of this. Now it's time for your questions, comments. I've got two people with microphones, Marie and Ann. So if you raise your hand, they will call on people, and that way, we hope, we'll be able to get to everybody.
I saw Juan first, so he's getting the mic first.
Thank you. So my name is Juan, I'm both a graduate of UMass Boston and a graduate student at UMass Boston. And I just wanted to point that in this whole presentation, the word "urban mission" was not mentioned even once.
I'm sorry, the word, I couldn't.
Urban mission? Those words were not mentioned even once. So I wanted to ask, going forward, or in the future, what's going to happen to students like me, right? While we find this gliding path with the legislature to find kind of how do we gap this financial issue, what happens to students like me, who are immigrant, first gen, non-traditional? Because we weren't mentioned in that presentation, not even once. So I want to know, like, how do we fit into all these master plans?
Thank you for the question. The urban mission is central to everything we do. And what's probably one of the reasons I didn't mention it, it's just understood in everything that we do, especially in everything we do around financial aid, everything we do around all the student success initiatives that we're talking about. They are all directed at providing the highest quality education we possibly can for all of our students, including those who come from first generation, low income, underrepresented groups, and everyone else who is on campus. Your future is absolutely essential to you and to us, and that's one of the reasons why I'm actually so hopeful about what Bayside is going to do, because I think it's going to provide some employment opportunities, some internship opportunities, some ways in which we can support the future that you've come here to establish. So in every respect, the students are the center of everything that we're doing here, and we appreciate both what it takes from you and what your commitments are, and we're here to serve you. That's how. Next question. Sorry, where's the microphone gone? Can't see.
Thank you. This is actually a comment, as well as a question, chancellor. I don't know if, my name's Annette Arger, so I'm the president of the Professional Staff Union on campus. We've been in, that's very nice. As you know, we've been in negotiations over parking fees. And I thank you for responding to the email that came from me and Janelle Quarles, the president of the Classified Unit, and integrating some of those issues into the presentation. I do, however, want to present you with some materials that we presented to your administration's bargaining team recently to make sure that you're aware of the economic reality of your employees. So I'm just going to highlight a few things. I will not read through all of this, for everybody's sake.
But I will.
Thank you. I hope you do. So when we look at the classified staff and professional staff on campus, there's about just shy of 900 of your employees that fall into those two bargaining units. And the median income for our full-time employees in that group is about $65,000. So half of us are making less than that. According to the MIT's Living Wage Calculator for Suffolk County, where the vast majority of us live, the living wage we need to raise one or two children in this area is $64,000 to $67,000. So about half of us are not making enough to live in this area. And just to make it really clear what that means, sorry to do these numbers out loud, folks, but this is the actual monthly accounts of one of your employees, one of our members, who makes more than that, who makes over $66,000. After this person has paid for, you know, our contributions to the pension, our copayment for health insurance, and all the taxes, they bring home about $3,500, and that disappears quickly to student loans, to housing, to groceries, to UMass Boston parking, $96 a month. And at the end of each month, this individual is left with about $172. That's it. To cover if they get a flat tire, to cover co-payments for going to the doctor, to cover all those emergency things that come up, let alone maybe going out to dinner once with friends, maybe getting to go to the movies. This is a person living very much financially on the edge, right? One disaster away from having to spend any other savings they may have. And this is somebody making more than half of your full-time professional classified staff. And this is somebody who doesn't have to take care of kids in the midst of all of this, right? Who's just taking care of themselves. If the parking fee proposals that your administration has been insisting on go into effect, this person's parking, monthly parking costs at Bayside will go up to $144 a month, leaving them $124 at the end of the month. And if your on-campus rates go into effect for this person, their parking fees will go up to $208 a month, leaving with a whopping $60 as their, I don't know what to call it, it's not a cushion, it's their money to live on, right? This is untenable. These proposed parking fee increases for your employees are untenable. This doesn't even begin to touch what's happening to our working-class students, right, that Juan gave voice to. This doesn't touch their reality. With many of my colleagues, your colleagues, we have spent time in the parking lots, leafleting, trying to educate students about what's going on. And when I've done that down at Bayside, at 7:00 in the morning before my workday starts, I run into dozens of our students sleeping in their cars, and they wake up when I put the flyer under their windshield wiper, and a number of them have gotten out of their cars to talk to me and tell me their stories. These are folks who are working multiple jobs, have responsibilities for taking care either of their own families or their siblings, and are trying to piece together the ability to come here and get a bachelor's degree to move on with their lives, right, to improve their lives. They're only able to get here two days a week, which means they're already limiting what they can do with their education to the courses that are offered on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Why are they doing that? In large part to limit already what it costs them to commute and park on this campus. When they hear that Bayside is going up for them, potentially, to $9 a day, that's a 50% increase in their costs on a weekly basis for parking. They can't afford it. They can't continue to live that way. It's a hardship just to make do with coming here two days a week. So the administration's proposals, if you really care about what happens to the employees here and the students, so that we can continue to work here and live, so that our students can continue to come here and study, and increase those numbers that were up there about student retention and not watch them drop, you need to instruct your bargaining team to radically reduce what they're looking for.
I'd like to have a chance to respond and let other people speak as well, because we don't have a lot of time left.
Yeah. I understand. We listen patiently for close to an hour and a half, so I just, I'm almost done. What I'm going to hand you is some of the testimony that your employees and students made at the parking bargaining, as well as some of their responses anonymously to a survey, so you'll have all of this stuff to look at. And the last point I wanted to make is this. I am ecstatic that you are willing to work in the legislature, with the legislature, to push for the correct solution to this problem. We have called on the legislature to do that for the last two years. I'm going to give you a copy of a report we issued last fall, I'm not sure if you saw it, before.
No, I wasn't here last fall.
Oh, I know you weren't, but many people in the administration have seen it, because it was shared broadly. We had a press release here on campus, and legislators came and actually got a tour of the substructure. We've been working diligently with the legislature to push this idea of what is the legacy debt at UMass Boston and where the responsibility sits. Not personal responsibility, as you were implying. None of those legislatures, or few of those legislatures, were around when this situation went down, but the state's responsibility.
Yes, I agree.
To a public institution. So we really, we really hope you will work with us. We're going to continue in those efforts, we'd love to partner with that. And on that front, the Massachusetts Teachers Association and a number of other unions are pushing for legislation to create and fund a foundation budget, not just for pre-K through 12 public education, but public higher education as well.
Wouldn't that be wonderful?
Will you support that effort?
I would like to learn a lot more about it, but I support any effort to bring in resources for public higher education. I couldn't agree more that that's critical, and that this state and many other states have been pulling back on that responsibility. And that is actually where so many of the issues that we have to cope with lie, and I regret that that's the case. We do have a budget to manage, and we will manage it, but in the end, if you're asking me, do I think that a big part of the solution lies in the citizens understanding this is a public good? Yes, I completely agree with that point of view. I have to say, most of the legislators I talk to do as well. And I intend to work as collaboratively with them as I can to address this exactly as you have suggested and as I believe. In the meantime, we do have a budget we've got to deal with, and I recognize that there are significant hardships involved. I do. I have spent quite a lot of time myself, both talking to students and to employees about these issues, as have my colleagues in administration. I don't think anybody relishes the idea of having to increase parking fees, but we've got, we've got a budget that we are responsible for bringing in at a zero margin, and we're not going to be allowed not to do so. So I'm trying to find every way possible that mitigates the burdens. The means testing is important, right? It is a sliding scale so that those who earn the least, and most especially our students, pay the least. For the students, it is embedded in, if they follow the right process, which we're working to make sure they do, embedded in their financial aid awards, so that we can take account of those costs as best we can through financial aid. These are important recognitions of exactly the values you've articulated. Those who earn the most, pay the most. Those who earn the least, pay the least. The students are protected as much as we possibly can by paying the lowest amounts. We are also, I'm pleased to say, actually with the leadership of many students, returning to our discussions with the MTA to see what we can do to increase the subsidies to T- Ridership, because, you know, we think that that, I mean, the vast majority of students and many staff are commuting on the public rails, and we would love to see what we can do. I mean, on the Lowell campus, there was an increase in student fees that supported their now more advantageous opportunities on the T. Our students have come forward to say, let's explore this and see what it might mean for us. I really hope that we're going to be able to get somewhere with that, and I've talked to a number of MTA officials about it, because in the end, you know, I think all of us realize, both for green reasons and for cost reasons, it would be better if public transit was more affordable for our students, our staff, and our faculty. So all the way around, I am both sympathetic and understanding of your point of view. I also have a responsibility, and I want to be very clear to all of you about this. I have a responsibility to bring this budget in at a zero margin. I don't, I'm not given the option to say no to that. That is what I'm going to do, because that is what every, actually, the other chancellors are under an obligation to do more than that, to find a 2% margin, and I have pushed back and said, we can't do that on this campus. Not now. This campus has been through too much. It has a long way to go before it's in the kind of stasis that it needs to be in, but achieving that degree of budget integrity and creating a planning process, and I know it sounds very boring, but actually, it's the essence of trying to be more proactive and planful about this, so it's not lurching from one crisis to another, is the essence of what I hope to do for you. I will read everything that you give me, I read everything everyone gives me. I will respond to any email anyone sends me. I am, most people know, more or less up 24/7, and most of that time I'm spending thinking about you, all of you. And I'm really hopeful that we can get to a resolution through the collective bargaining process, which we all believe in. process, which we all believe in, and which everyone, as far as I'm concerned, has entered into on a good faith basis. That is absolutely essential to the trust going forward for our ability to work together. And I want to say this on behalf of my colleagues on the bargaining team, who spend countless hours, as you do and your colleagues do, trying to come to a resolution. We know that no resolution is perfect. We know that. We know that these burdens are significant. We are looking for every way possible to mitigate this without digging too much more deeply into student tuition, which is the main revenue source we have. Many of our students who are paying for their, you know, for their rides on the T, we're not going to dig deeper into their tuition to subsidize parking more. We can't. So it costs a lot to run a university, and I recognize that those burdens need to be distributed in as equitable a way as we can. And that's what means testing is all about. And while I continue, with your help, to support in every way possible and to advocate for the resources to come to this campus, so that we can get past this debt issue, so that we can stop paying $21 million in interest every year on that debt, I mean, it just keeps me up at night thinking about what we could do with those resources for you, for us, for all of us, if we didn't have that debt to face. I think we can all agree that that would be the best solution. Will we be able to get there? I don't know. I mean, all I can do is pledge to you that I will try. And with your support, I hope we will get there. And I think if we can do so over a period of time that people feel is manageable, people in our legislative colleagues, that I think is our best bet. So that's what I'm going to pledge to you. And if I'm successful, we will come back to these parking rates. Nobody is trying to make a bundle on parking. We're just trying to cover the costs that are there. And I don't have other revenue sources to turn to to do that. So I am going to say this, you know, that my colleagues on the bargaining team are working in good faith and, in my opinion, with good values as well. You may not agree, but that's actually what I believe. And we're going to see this through, one way or the other, to a conclusion that hopefully we can all live with, though I know it will not be easy, not for you as a student, not for anybody who's having to pay more. But we will work hard to try and make this as equitable as we possibly can. And I appreciate your patience. I appreciate your engagement in the collective bargaining process. I fundamentally appreciate the ability and the willingness of people to raise their voices when they disagree. That's the essence of a collective bargaining process. At the, in the end of the day, and here I really want to emphasize this, this institution needs to be about trust between us, even when we don't agree, even when you think that the proposals you're seeing are not to your liking. Use your democratic rights to vote as you see fit. But at the end of the day, this is a single institution that needs to be united as we, I'm not going to say those awful words, move forward, as we try to seek the future that we all believe in and that fundamentally, and most of all, is on behalf of the students we serve. There is nothing and nobody more important. Thank you.
Right.
And I'll take all those materials, please.
I will. I'll hand them to you in just a second. I just have to take exception with one thing that's been put forward as fact. And let me word this very carefully. I fully believe you when you say that the Board of Trustees and Marty Mian has said zero, right? We need to have a balanced budget. However, last year, this campus was told we could run in the red by $5 million. We could use $5 million of those, I don't remember how many, $38 million that were up there for unrestricted reserves. That was the agreement. You had shared that with us. Instead of going negative five, we ended up positive 2.3. We have unrestricted reserves on this campus. The president's office has unrestricted reserves. There are other options here for the 3.8 million that is trying to be added to the actual cost of operating the parking garages, and that's driving up the proposals for these parking fees.
I want to respectfully disagree.
There are other options.
And I am no specialist about reserve policy. But as, thank you. As our leader Kathleen explained, we are not permitted to use reserves for funding the operating budget. And look at what happened to those reserves. Just look at that glide path from 2014 on. It has nosedived. It's not sustainable. The campus will not stay in business if it continues to eat into those reserves. That's why it's not allowed. And it is exactly that that got this campus deep into trouble. And I will tell you, I'm not going there. Because that cushion is necessary for the campus to survive. I mean, if we had horrible floods or something that we had to recover from, that's what reserves are there to take care of. But to use those funds for operating expenses is a recipe for disaster. To go from $29, $25 million to $9 million in the space of, what was it, three years? That's not a sustainable trajectory, and I won't do it. I won't do it. Now, other questions?
Hi, my name is Deb Button. I'm in the English department, and I teach the relatively new course, Experiencing Boston, which runs fall and spring. So I am teaching freshmen as well as other students. But I've gotten very close with my students, as we often do. And when the Globe article came out about the dorms, I talked with them about it, and we looked at the response articles that the students had written. But I wanted to tell you that my freshmen really noticed that you turned up at the dorm, that as soon as you read those statements that you were over there, one of them said she saw you at 3:00 AM, that you were walking around, and you said you need to...
Not quite, but that's okay.
Yeah. Early in the morning. But they really noticed. And I think from what you've just been saying in past comments about you talked with students and you, and I know that to be true. And I see your engagement and your commitment coming into a very difficult situation. But I have been here for 10 years, and I'm so impressed with what you've done so far. And I think not enough positive has been said.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I appreciate that very much. You know, I am a social scientist, so I want to see the facts in front of my own eyes. I want to collect the data. And that's really why I went to the dorms, to see for myself. So thank you. I appreciate that. Next question.
Hi. $200 million is...
Sorry, where are you? Can't see.
Right here. Eliza Wilson. I'm an alum here.
Yes, Eliza.
Interim Chancellor Mills had retained a real estate development advisor, Leggett McCall. You indicated that is not your strength. Wonderful to admit that real estate development and investment is not your strength.
That's why we still have them.
Right. So I just wanted to be sure you still have that.
Oh, absolutely. Because I'm not a real estate expert. I'm a social scientist.
Just making sure.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
You can be sure of that. We're very careful about, we have very, very good advice, and our consultant from Leggett McCall is fantastic. Brilliant.
Her mood is wonderful.
He's amazing.
Yeah.
Next, somebody, somewhere?
So I'm Kelsey McCall. I'm chief steward for CSU, working in College of Nursing and Health Sciences. First off, can I just correct one thing on behalf of my colleagues in the College of Nursing and Health Sciences? We are not the College of Nursing or the nursing school. We are both nursing and health sciences. We're trying to fix just viewing us as a nursing school.
Did somebody say otherwise? I must have missed that.
It keeps coming up. Every time the campus talks about it, it's the nursing school, it's the nursing school. We're a college. We work together.
I just was there for, actually, an hour this morning, talking with all of your colleagues. And so I'm very well aware of all the splendors in the college.
Awesome. It just hits a nerve, I guess. So in the request of transparency, you said Bayside's going to be great for us to get money back into the campus and better the campus for what we need. Would you be willing to tell us what options are out there, what proposals have been put out? Because as an alumni, as a hopeful, longtime staff here, I don't see us getting stuff out of Bayside appropriately that's going to benefit us if we have private entities coming in, unless it's going to benefit our students first, obviously, but also our staff. I mean, we have buildings that are crumbling to the ground. I work, unfortunately, in one of them. But like overall, I think we have an issue where we can get any private entity to come in and sponsor anything, an internship, a partnership, what have you. But it's only going to be beneficial for them more often to us if it's going to just be this giant building.
Oh, no. So I think there's going to be a lot more information of the kind you're looking for after a developer's been chosen. Because right now, what we're seeing is not substantive. It's things like, how many thousands of square feet are there? And what's the schedule for permitting? It's not as specific as you're thinking about. But when I wrote up, in a sense, the campus desiderata for Bayside, it included things like firms that will be interested in our research mission, firms that will be hiring our students, not only in the construction phases, and not just our students either, our neighbors, not only in the construction phases, but in the developments that are there thereafter. I'm particularly hopeful that there will be, you know, a range of things that emphasize bioscience, computer science. I mean, there are many different areas of STEM that may be possible, and I'm not sure even what they are. I went to one meeting that was very interesting of developers who were there and architects who were there to talk about Kendall Square and it's the fact that it's full up and where else is scientific bioscience going to go. And nobody mentioned UMass Boston. And so at the end of it, I just raised my hand and said, oh, by the way, I'm here as the chancellor of UMass Boston, and we're going to have this fantastic neighborhood. And we are looking for industries doing research that's compatible with the work that our faculty do. And I got a lot of interest, because everybody realized it's an eight-minute ride on the red line, and there are plenty of opportunities there. So the substance of what will be going into Bayside is quite a ways off, because it depends first on these more mundane things like square feet and so on. But when that substance is under discussion, there will be lots more opportunity for engagement. And I promise you, if I'm still in this role, the ways in which it will benefit our students comes first in my mind, the way in which it will interact with our faculty and their research comes next in my mind, and the way in which will benefit our community, the community around us, is always on my mind, including waterfront access, retail, because there's not a lot of retail around here, and our neighbors would like to see that, both for employment and for enjoyment. So I, you know, I do think Bayside is going to be an extraordinary game changer. I do. Next question.
Hi. My name's Tom Goodkind. I work in the machine shop, which I think will be the last entity out of the Science Building. And if that happens by August 2019, I'll be astounded. But I want to follow up a little bit on some issues that Annetta brought up and that you responded to. First, on the idea of a sliding scale, which you've mentioned a couple of times. I just want to be clear that the agreement which the faculty is considering right now includes no sliding scale. So that faculty members who earn less money will be paying a significantly higher percentage of their income for parking.
I don't, I'm not going to answer questions specifically, but I will call on Marie, where is she?
Okay.
Because she's, I don't know this stuff as well as she does.
Yeah, that's, I mean, there is a sliding scale on the other bargaining table with the CSU and PSU. That sliding scale, which the university has proposed to us, would have our lowest-paid members paying more for on-campus parking than highly-paid tenure faculty under the faculty agreement.
Again, I'm going to ask, somebody knows better than me.
Okay. But I just think people need to know that.
Yeah. And so, Tom, if I, I'm not going to interrupt your whole spiel, but I just want to say a little bit more about that, because a couple of people have asked.
I don't think your mic is on.
No.
Come up here, Marie.
Bring it right here.
I can talk really loud. How about that? It's on now. Thank you so much, Erin. So to Tom's point, two things. One is that the faculty deal that's being considered by the faculty right now, there we go. Thank you, Kelsey. I'm not good on the public stage. I know. The, that deal, while it definitely does not have the kind of sliding scale that's been on the table with some of the other unions, it does have means testing embedded in it, because there are provisions for those at the lower end of the faculty pay scale, in particular, associate lecturers and NTTs who are less than full-time, to pay less. And that comes up in a couple of different ways in that construct. So I would say it's not as maybe elaborate a means testing approach as some of the other deals that we've been discussing, which is fine. I mean, it's, you know, there's different ways to do things, and probably different unions will end up with different deals in the end. And to the point about kind of comparing, if you will, what the faculty would be paying were they to ratify that deal with what kind of is on the table so far, I think it's true as far as it goes. I think it's also important to note the very critical fact that the faculty deal is a deal. We've signed it, a tentative agreement with the faculty that's gone out for ratification after a long bargaining process. And we're still in the midst of bargaining with you, so we don't know where we'll end up, but hopefully someplace we can all agree on in the end, so.
Thank you. There are some weeds to get in there, and I'm not going to go there.
Probably not.
Thank you.
But on another issue, and this goes back to the issue of trust, which you brought up, and back to the issue of debt. The good news here, and I think, you know, you've shared it well, and I think probably everyone here is happy about it, is that there is finally, two things, really. There's finally some public opinion developing about the need to address this campus's legacy debt. As Annetta pointed out, some of us have been working on this for years, and it's great that you are working on this now. The Globe editorial was a great thing to see. And we have had President Mian and Chairman Manning of the trustees talking about this as well. And I think many of us believe firmly that this is the time to address this. And we're very hopeful that there will be something like what you described. And whether it's a glide path towards curing the debt. And I'm really happy to hear the term glide path used in that way, rather than in terms of the decimation of our centers and institutes. This is the kind of glide path we can get behind. But there is a long-term solution coming. There's that legislative possibility, and there is Bayside. And I know the last time we met, you said it would be a tragedy for the proceeds from Bayside to be used to offset the debt for the parking garage. And I kind of know what you mean. There might be better uses for that. But it is a tragedy for the students and employees to have to shoulder that burden. That is a short-term, that's a short-term...
I'm aware of your point. And I guess I want you to think, when I say that, when I said it's a tragedy, there's a sequence here. And the sequence is that I'm hoping very much that with all the hard work you've done and the hard work the rest of us will be putting in, that we will get first to a solution with the legislature. That is the most intelligent and, in my opinion, fair sequence. And I'd like to start there, because I'm concerned if I start somewhere else, we don't get to the first base with that solution. And I think that is the most fair and equitable way. But I do want to say this, because it's important you understand. There's nothing in the bag here. This is something I'm going to have to work at. I don't know for sure that it will be successful, but there is a lot more, I think, public sentiment that's supportive. I think taking a more cooperative attitude and trying to make it clear that we understand that the state has many other things to fund, right? They have Medicaid expansion to fund, they have K through 12 schools to fund, there is a lot of, a lot of needs coming at our state legislature. And we are one. And I'm going to advocate as strongly as possible for us. But I also recognize that it's not realistic to imagine that this is going to be, going to disappear in one fell swoop, or easily right now, this minute. Instead, if I'm successful, if we are collectively successful, I hope it will be a glide path over time that reduces that principal and therefore reduces that debt. And if we succeed, we will come back to these parking rates, because all we're trying to do is pay those costs. And if we can find another way to do that, we will do that.
This is where the trust comes in, right? Exactly there. Because if the university administration is truly committed to addressing the parking rates, should a long-term solution arise, whether from the legislature or Bayside, it would commit in specific language that that will happen. That is not what's happening. We are getting very vague assurances.
Again, I'm going to ask Marie, because the details, I don't know that much about. I will tell you this, though.
Folks, the vague assurances.
I am not going to make any specific commitments around Bayside. I don't have any idea what Bayside's going to produce or on what pace or what the fees are going to be by then.
Let me just give you an example of that. All that has been put on the table from the union side is that something in the range of the current ratio of lower-cost options to higher-cost options be maintained.
I'm going to let Marie speak to that. I think she did.
Do you want me to speak to that? I don't want to interrupt your work. Am I, I'm good with the mic this time?
Yeah, please.
Okay, so I'm learning from my mistakes. So I think, Tom, there's two separate points, and I think it's maybe important that we I don't want to interrupt your work. Am I, I'm good with the mic this time?
Yeah, please.
Okay, so I'm learning from my mistakes. So, I think, Tom, there's two separate points and I think it's maybe important that we don't conflate them.